Page recorded to this computer or record to cloud?
Okay, after a little delay, this is the September 25th, 2025 Lexington Planning Commission that I am calling to order officially. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any items that they need to alter in any way? Okay, then I'll take a motion in a second.
Move to accept the agenda as written?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed and the motion carries unanimously. Second is approval of the minutes. They looked thorough to me. Does anybody have any thoughts or concerns, questions, comments, questions? Speak now or forever hold your peace?
Yep, I will. I just make one quick comment. At the end of the discussion, I think we did say this, but it says the discussion was deferred until the meeting on October 9th, but then the motion was actually for the 23rd. I do think that discussion happened, but I think it makes it confusing. I'd almost say strike that sentence for the October 9th. It's not really pertinent.
Uh, where are you?
Um, on the, uh, at the end of the discussion, right before the motion, it's the very last sentence.
Uh, the discussion was deferred to the meeting on October 9, 2025?
Yeah.
And you're suggesting or striking that sentence?
Strike that sentence. It's a little confusing.
I agree. Um, yeah.
Just as a very minor point, um, the planning department report isn't labeled as such. I don't know if that should be under other business, Arnie's report to us.
Um.
Do we normally?
You know?
That's part of that.
Kate, would, would you be able to speak to that? On, on the gen, sorry, in the minutes, do you, did you usually pull out and label Arnie's report?
Planning and zoning report.
Planning and zoning report.
We just didn't give a heading or subheading under other business, but.
Okay, so, so I would just ask Brinsley if you would, you know, that would, that would be helpful for sort of, you know, the way that these run read is you want to make sure that people know what they're reading. So that would be helpful. Maybe if, um, maybe if they could, if your labels could go along with the agenda, um, that, that might be a good rule of thumb. Thank you. Um, any other? So, so you'll add a, um, planning and zoning report header under other business. Add header. Um, anything else? Okay, then I'll take a motion and a second.
Move approval of the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed and motion carries unanimously. Um, okay, so. Sorry, moving on. Um, the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments on matters that are not on the agenda. So I will open the floor, but it looks like we don't have anybody to come up and make any comments. So I'm going to close that section of the agenda and move on to new business. Um, so the first item on new business is CPA 2025 dash oh one comprehensive plan review, local economy chapter by Jeremy Crute with the central planning, Shenandoah Planning District Commission. Um, Arnie, can we have a staff report?
I'm just going to hand it straight over to Jeremy.
All right. Thank you for coming all the way down again.
Thank you.
Same.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Very good. There you are.
So sure.
Hello again. Pleasure to be with you as always. Um, again, Jeremy, this is Shenandoah Planning District Commission. Um, just wanted to give a quick update. Um, thank you, um, about, and walk you through the next two chapters, uh, which in this case is the local economy and the government's chapters and as.
Jeremy, can I get you to pull that microphone up and straighten it up a little bit? There we go.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's just for the recording.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, so, uh, yeah, so I just wanted to walk you through that and have a discussion as, as we have in previous, I guess, the, the last couple of months about, um, changes that you would like to make to, um, the chapter and particularly, particularly as it relates to the needs assessment and the goals and objectives. But, um, before jumping into the chapter, I always want to start with a little, um, I guess, stage setting by looking at some of the, the feedback we've received from, um, the survey in particular. So if you want to flip over to the second slide, um, there's just a, we're going to walk, quickly walk through a couple of questions that had, uh, were related to both of the chapters that we're about to look at. Um, so question four there was related to what features the city should prioritize over the next 20 years. And then again, just thinking about it in terms, through the lens of the economy and governance, um, the, uh, new businesses and shops was just behind historic preservation as the, the most, um, or I guess most often requested, um, item or the thing that, that the city should prioritize the most. Um, oh, I guess I should have also mentioned that, um, as of last week, we now have 163 responses, um, to the survey, um, considering cutting that off, say, on Monday, just to go ahead and, uh, have a clean break so we can start analyzing the final data of that, open to other thoughts. If you prefer to keep that open longer, but that's at least what I'm thinking at the moment. So I have 163 responses after having opened it, um, on August 11th. So it's now been open, um, for about almost a month and a half. Um, but yeah, so there was, um, of the things the cities should prioritize, um, 43% said, uh, new shops and businesses. And then only 13% said local leadership and government service, which I would like to interpret as meaning that you are doing a great job and don't need to focus on that quite as much. But, um, uh, yeah, so that, that's question four. And then if you want to go ahead and flip to the next one, um, question five, we're just thinking about the types of new development. I believe we might have looked at this one last time as well, but, um, in terms of new development that you'd most like to see, um, again, let's see, um, retail shops and restaurants ranked very highly was the number one. Um, with renovation of some existing buildings and facilities was, was next, um, with mixed use development and grocery stores. Um, uh, ranking or also ranking relatively highly. So in terms of just getting a sense as to the direction that folks would like, uh, folks or residents would like, uh, or the types of new development that residents would like to see. Um, like the economy chapter is obviously not the only one that will relate to that chapter, but it's certainly one of the contributing chapters that plays into, to that sort of thing. Did you have a question?
If it's an appropriate time for one, but I don't want to interrupt you.
Please, absolutely.
I just, we're more an observation on that, that in the way that that question's asked, there's four separate responses about different types of housing, right? Single family residential, townhouses, duplexes, apartments, condos, senior housing, mostly just noting that. I'm not saying that you should sum the number of responses for that, of course, but considering them all separately could give a false sense of the low, of the prioritization of housing. Does that make sense?
And I think actually the next question certainly kind of, I guess, address speaks to that point a little bit. Because when it relates to folks having to choose a top priority, housing certainly rises farther up the list.
Thank you.
I think you are right that that does split, that the, um, folks who believe that housing is a need to sort of get split out between those few. And I think, um, question 12 sort of hints to that with, I think it's, um, housing and, and infrastructure maintenance were clearly the top two. Uh, but then economic development and job creation coming in number three behind that. So, uh, I think you're definitely right that both of those things are held and, and, and as a, held to be a very high priority, um, um, by, by residents. And, uh, it's certainly a good point that that does sort of water down, uh, the housing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I have a question about these. Is it, would it be possible for you to change the way that you're presenting the information so that they are ranked?
For sure.
I think that that would help because like you just said, that, that, uh, you listed four items, but, but parks and open space actually came in higher than grocery stores, but it's hard to tell that.
Sure.
Um, so I just think that that would, that would help the, the readability.
Absolutely. Yeah, I believe they are simply ordered as they were represented within the survey.
Right, exactly.
But, um, we can definitely go back and reorder them in accordance with, uh, in accordance with how often they were selected. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Happy to.
Since, since we're, we're trying to get a, a sense of top priorities and, you know, the most, you really, you want it to be easy to, to get that answer. Thank you.
Uh huh. Perfect. So, um, with that, just as a quick little stage setting, um, we can just go ahead and jump into the local economy chapter, um, which just provides an overview of the city's, um, economic health, um, in the, in terms of its existing conditions. Um, and then looking towards again, as, as all the chapters do, following that same general format, uh, looking at the planning context, particularly with the, in this case, looking at the, the human capital and workforce is, is where it starts before jumping into, um, the current industry breakdown and existing businesses, including major employers, uh, looking at the partnerships and initiatives that the city has that support, um, local economic development, um, all of that, then culminating in a needs assessment, um, and, uh, the identification of goals and strategies to try to, um, foster long-term economic health within, um, within the community. So, um, just, I guess, by way of context and, and trying to get a sense of how things may or have changed over the last few years. Um, that, that table there at the bottom, just that lists some of the, the, the key employment and socioeconomic economic factors. Thank you. Perfect. Um, another great. Um, so, um, yeah, so I guess just, just to give you a sense in terms of also how these numbers have, have changed over the last few years. Um, total employment has risen by about, at least according to the data we're looking at through Virginia Works, has risen by close to 25% up to, um, uh, 5,000 or 5,600, um, number. Um, your already exceptionally high educational attainment has continued to rise currently with 41, um, excuse me, I've, I've looked at the wrong one, 57.3% of the, the population, um, with a bachelor's degree, um, which as you can note is significantly higher than both the county and, um, the state, not a big surprise with the major university presence here. Um, however, despite that, your poverty rate has remained about the same hovering around 15.9%, um, which is relatively similar to what was both pre-pandemic, um, and during the last, um, comprehensive plan update. Um, and while your unemployment rate has recovered to pre-pandemic levels, it remains a couple of percentage points higher than, than the state and county average, um, although that also potentially could be due to, um, the number, the high number of college students. Although I do believe that the high number of college students is more represented by that very low labor force participation rate. Um, uh, cause that certainly is a major factor, um, within, within that. So, um, I think all that to, to sort of suggest that, uh, at least since the, the past or the previous, um, comprehensive plan update, that, um, the economy has seemed to continue to grow and seem to continue to be in a, a, a good place. Um, so about to tell you to flip, but we can go ahead and click ahead. Perfect. Um, so, um, continuing on to look at the employment mix, um, as.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm, I'm a little confused because we were given a packet that has different stuff. So what, what would actually be in the plan?
So a lot of this information is represented in paragraph form in the plan. I guess just for pride's sake, I put it into a table. Um, but certainly can't, if, if you'd like to see some of that represented within that. Um, but yeah, I think with, if you're looking at the actual chapter.
Yeah, that's, that's what we were given and, and that, um, and that I think we maybe made notes on. So it's just, uh, it's a little bit hard for me to follow along when I'm like, wait a minute, not sure where I am.
Yes, I think most of what the data that you were just looking at is represented in paragraph form on what would be page 47. Um, after the one, after the introduction under human capital and the planning context, some of it then sneaks over, I think, into the, um, the next one, but I think this slide currently is more on the next page after that, um, and following.
Okay, so what would be the most useful way? Because I know I have some questions about the content of these.
Sure.
Um, I think at least some, some other members do.
Yeah.
Um, what would, what would be the most helpful to you in this process?
Um, so I guess, especially if you do have specific comments on this, we can just go, switch gears and go straight through the chapter. I think that'd be perfectly fine. I think sometimes, um, other commissions prefer just sort of a presented summary of it first and then we can dive into it, but that's sort of up to you. And if you'd like to walk through the chapter page by page, I'm more than happy to do that. If anything, that makes my job easier because it's, it gives me the specific things that you'd like to, to have changed.
But I need to go, since we've had this, um, I just, does anybody want to go through the summary first? Or are we, can we just jump right in?
Works for me.
Okay, um. All right, so what, what, given that, should we start on page? Actually, I'm going to start on, I have a comment just on the, uh, the picture. You can sort of read the license plates on two of the cars and the photograph on the local, so you might want to blur those.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does anybody have any comments on page 46? Yeah, that's the, the.
Right, the, the intro, right? Um, well, yes, if it's a good time for that. So, um, this is small potatoes really, but that third paragraph, where it says Lexington's economic strength, its universities also presents a challenge.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Uh, also presents a challenge, including a disproportionate number of untaxed properties.
Mm-hmm.
So this is one theme is that this comes up a couple of times and I don't think the statement there is, is wrong. Though as you later clarify, it's, it's, um, it's not just the universities that are untaxed properties. And there's another passage where there's been some discussion of, um, whether there is actually a revenue deficit or at least one of the institutions that we'll can circle back to. So I'm just sort of flagging that there. The other thing that struck me about that paragraph, but it's truly super small potatoes is that it seems like that with the unifying theme of that paragraph is challenges, but it just reads as kind of like two different, right? Like Lexington's economic strength, its universities also presents a challenge, including a disproportionate number of untaxed properties. Even in its relative economic success, poverty affects a portion of Lexington's population who struggle with housing affordability and food security. I think both of those issues are, are true. It just seems like they're kind of, the transition between them feels kind of rough. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Like I think you're trying to say there's also economic challenges and they are, but am I making any sense, Jeremy?
For sure. Would it be helpful to split that into two separate paragraphs?
Maybe, yeah, that would be one solution, I think, if that sounds good to you.
Or, or you could say another challenge for the city is poverty, which affects a portion or.
Right.
Reword it in that way, if you wanted to leave that as the.
Yeah.
Challenges. I mean, actually, I, if you were going to leave them together, I would have a first sentence that says something like, Lexington has economic strengths, but it also has challenges, period. And then, you know, and then you could, I suppose you could leave it. It, it would be a little bit redundant to, to leave it without wordsmithing. Um, but that might be since, since you then do addressing these challenges requires in the next paragraph.
Yeah.
So you might want to have something that, that reads a little bit more like, this is the paragraph about the challenges.
For sure.
Um.
Yeah. No, I, I like that. That's a, I think that's a, it's a good change. Perfect.
Okay.
Else on that introductory page?
Anything else? No. It's really the next page. Anybody? All right. So who wants to go first? There we go.
So is, I have, I, I don't. I, I'm skeptical of the 77, 76.7% increase in median household income between 2020 and 2023. I just don't think that can be right. It's got to be a small sample issue or something like that. I had a quick look at, um, census, small area income and poverty estimates and the, it doesn't, it doesn't show a jump like that. In fact, it shows relative stability there, but you're maybe looking at a different source of data. But I just, I can't imagine the scenario that, that increase, that rate of increase seems just implausibly high.
For sure.
That makes sense?
Absolutely. Yeah, I can go back and, and, and relook at that and make sure that it's, it is pulling. I, I do know that, um, well, yeah, I'll, I'll go back and check to make sure.
Totally. Thanks. Yeah.
That would be great.
We're like focused on the little things, but the whole thing is really good, you know what I mean?
Yes, it is.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
The little things is.
Yeah, good. Yeah, yeah.
Um, so do you have anything? Actually, why don't, why don't we start at the first paragraph? Does anybody have anything about the first paragraph?
I'm not sure how human capital reads.
Yes.
That's in terms of that being the title instead of, um, instead of another more, I guess, appropriately titled title. Yeah.
About what that, yeah, what that speaks to.
Right. So could you explain what your indicators for human capital are? I had to sort of do a Google search on that, like what that would actually end up being because it's not, it's not like the demographics.
Yeah.
Um, so I would love to, to know what that meant.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. I think it would be more reflective. I think, I suspect workforce might be a, a more preferable title for that. And just in thinking through the, the socioeconomic, um, I guess, factors and indicators of both the city's population and workforce. I suspect that's probably the, I guess, maybe a, a better way to, to, to title that would be to, to frame it in terms of population, workforce and socioeconomic factors. Uh, I think often when you look at how, say, income and poverty rates and employment rates and those types of things are, those are indicators of how the economy is doing as a whole as well. And so I think that's sort of the, the, the reason there, certainly the reason that they're included there. But I agree that we can certainly shift that terminology away from human capital towards, um, something that might be a little bit more, um, I guess, true to what we're, to what we're discussing.
Makes sense. And it's like, it's not ill-used from a social science point of view. It's how we tend to use the word, but it's as a public facing document that with that technical term of our, maybe it's better to say something like you just proposed. That sounds great. Yeah.
Also, human capital, so the human capital indicators that I found were things like workforce size, diversity, stability, absenteeism, their training, health, willingness to cooperate. Those were the things that I found in like, from like Harvard. So, so, so talking about education and, um, median income, I think I would be much more comfortable with population workforce.
Absolutely.
Or workforce indicators even. Um, uh, so another thing that, that was a little bit, and, and this is maybe a, I'm, I may be being super sensitive about this, but the fact that, you know, how many people, how many residents have a bachelor's degree compared to the county feels a little bit sort of like othering. And I know it's, it's, it's not that it's not true. Um, but I think, you know, just being sensitive to the, um, socioeconomic and political differences. I think it, it sort of is, um, it feels awkward.
Okay.
Except that I think, I do think it's important data because it is an issue on a number of levels from employment to education. Um, so it's just a piece of data, but I think it does inform a lot of other issues.
Could you?
I can.
Expand on that?
For instance, in our high schools, it's important that we have VOTEC programs because not everybody goes to college. And then when you're looking for workforce, depends what level of workforce you want. If you want college educated, you're going to have a little bit of a problem in our area.
Would it be helpful to change it to a comparison to a national average to sort of, to get to, to, to address the point that it is a very highly educated population, what without sort of othering our neighbors? Would that be?
We put it in everything. It's in our tourism information. It's.
You mean comparing to Rockbridge County?
Yeah. I mean, this, I think it's an important piece of data, not to shame anyone, but to know what the differences are between city and county. And when you're looking for employment, uh, either to locate a business or if you're looking for employees, I think you just need, you want that information.
I, I guess I would probably, I would probably disagree with that because, I mean, even later in here, it does talk about how people work in the county, live in the city, vice versa. And, and it, because it's all so close, it, it, it doesn't matter. I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I, I guess maybe we just disagree about that.
Right.
Um, so what would, I, I'd be curious how you would word it if you were doing a national average.
I, I think it'd probably just be rewording that, that last line or the piece of that last line there with, um, it could even be compared to X percent, you know, or compared to, I guess it could just be just compared to the national average. Then in parentheses, put the print, uh, the percentage or something along those lines. Um.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have an issue with the Virginia overall number. It's just because. It's just because, um, you know, there, there was always a, there was always an issue between the county kids and the city kids. And I assume that that's still true.
Well, you got data right here saying it probably is true.
I know, but I just, I just don't, I just wouldn't say that that's something that we want to say is that. I don't know. It's, it's the, it's the looking down noses at.
And that's, and you're not hiring people. I think if a, a new employer comes to town, they want to know demographics.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be perfectly good for them to say, oh, that there's fifty-seven point three percent hold a bachelor's degree in Lexington?
In Lexington, which is a small percentage of our region.
Does the county present this information as well?
I have no idea. I've read the most of their plan, but I don't remember.
Be interesting to know if the county, if the, if the county sort of says our, you know, we have thirty, whatever, thirty-one percent have a bachelor's degree, whereas in Lexington, they have, you know, anyway, okay. So I'm, I'm, you know, maybe you could look at how you can, whether there's some way of presenting this in, in a way that maybe without, I mean, obviously we don't want to misrepresent, but we, I, I mean, I really feel strongly that we don't want to make it an awkward comparison.
And I guess just to.
I don't know. That's just me, maybe.
And I guess just to, to make sure I'm understanding too, I know that's a, you know, with the comparisons to the county and the state is something that we do multiple times, even again, at the end of the next paragraph. Is, is it primarily just as it relates to the workforce characteristics and the level of education in this case? And not as it relates to other factors? Is that, would that be?
I, I would say it's fair to say that it's about education.
I'm happy to take a look at how that's represented in the county's plan and, and adjust accordingly. Or like I mentioned, either make the comparison simply to the state or the nation if that's preferable in any way, but happy to.
Well, what, what do other people think? I mean, obviously Leslie disagrees, so anybody else have any thoughts about that?
How's that going to translate when we're talking about poverty rates or anything else when we may not be comfortable with that? So then are we going to start parsing other ones as well?
Well, that's a good question. Not that the poverty rate seems to be related to our education rates. Since our poverty rates are substantially higher than the counties. So I, I'm not.
I'm just saying that then regardless of what side that you're picking from or I just fear that, you know, this is really just data. I would recommend that it just stay in as it is. And then if you're going to start choosing what not to, then you're going to have to do that for the rest of it potentially. And I think that's less and less valuable.
So is, is, um, I've forgotten, do you include that anywhere else or is it just in that one?
Used to be on a table at the very, in appendix, but I don't know if it's still there. I, I, well, it is. It's an appendix in the, in the back. Yeah.
I, I guess I would say that I know that, that kind of comparison, um, to, you know, either your surrounding county and the state or those type of things is a very common convention um, that is used often in, in plans across a multitude of factors. I do think there is, can be wisdom in thinking through the implications of what that means on a particular factor, but, but at least in terms of just like it being a very common way of framing these types of conversations to see the ways in which your community is unique to or different from those around is, is sort of a common convention, but, um.
Well, okay, that, that's good to hear. Um, so that brings me back to this, is this gonna, this is the thing that you just handed out, is this table?
Uh, it is not currently there. If you think it'd be helpful addition to include, it certainly can. But some of that basically takes what was represented in those couple of paragraphs and some of the, the future stuff and
The employer, which?
The, the one prior to that.
Chapter summary.
Yeah.
It has the, I mean, it has the, all of those numbers are represented right here on this one table. I mean, in some ways, rather than calling it out in, in this, in the paragraph, it's less, it's somewhat less offensive in a, in a table. It's, it's sort of like, this is factual, whereas this is sort of like, this is what we decided to cherry pick and point out.
Sure. The one thing I would need to, I guess, double check is to, to your point is to the degree to which all of that's already represented within the append, appendix. Um, but I can certainly go back and look and or pull that, what was in the appendix into the text of the chapter to, 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 um, to your point, present that information in a way that doesn't spell it out in the paragraph.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm not opposed to, to having the information available. It's just that I think it was just like, this is the very beginning of the, of the chapter and it's, I don't know.
And you know what another possible thing could be right there? If you just want to kind of just tweak that one sentence, Lexington residents over the age of twenty, or something, just started with fifty-seven point three percent of Lexington residents over the age of twenty-five hold a bachelor's degree or higher. The, in the count, when, and you, and then, then somebody is interested in what the county presents, they can go look and see what the county has. This, you're just telling them what Lexington has. End of sentence. I mean, that's one idea.
Yeah.
Then you're not really comparing them. But that's, I'm not sure if that's what you're trying to achieve.
Well, I think in, in the, in the sense that this is a, a descriptive paragraph, I think that what you're suggesting certainly would work. I mean, you could just leave it off, stop, uh, let's see. Stop with.
Percent of Lexington residents hold a bachelor's degree or higher.
Or, or you can say Lexington residents over the age of twenty-five are highly educated with a, with fifty-seven point three percent holding a bachelor's degree or higher, higher period, and then delete the rest of the sentence. But have the more information in the table. You could even say for more information.
If you don't compare it to something, you know, you at least have to have the state. But I think you're not even kind of representing what our area, we have a mixed area. It, it makes it interesting. It makes challenges. And I think that tells you that all in that one statistic without having to list what our challenges are. I mean, yeah, I don't, this is such a small piece and nobody's ever complained. And we got a whole lot of more information to go through.
I know, Leslie, it's, it's, it's just one of these things. I, I am also very aware that we are in a, you know, we're, we're in a time when I think we need to be quite sensitive.
Well, I know, and it, you know, and it helps, it does help explain why the median household income is, is different to, even though some of that's due to retirees always skew it, things like that. I mean, there, there could be a lot into it. I think you just put the data in there. I really think we're way overthinking this.
Would it help if the, we simply removed the clause that says Lexington residents over the age of twenty-five are highly educated? And just made the sentence straight up descriptive, didn't drop the comparative data, said it, but just said fifty-seven point three percent of residents, of Lexington residents over the age of twenty-five hold a bachelor's degree, period.
Higher.
Maybe that first clause just frames it in a way that gives the vibe of, you know, some kind of negative comparison. Maybe that language disappears, all the information's still there and the problem.
But, but that was one of the things we talked about that makes Lexington very unique. We have two colleges. I mean, that, that is a big selling point to bring people here. That is why retirees come here, you know? Yeah.
How about if we, um, say Lexington residents over the age of twenty-five have, or fifty-seven percent hold? I mean, that's going to be clear, like include the comparisons, just remove as, as, um, John was saying, remove the qualifier, the highly educated. I mean, people will know that if you're looking for it. If you have all three numbers in that sentence and you've just removed the highly educated.
How about take out the word compared? How about just make it statements of the fifty-seven hold percent hold a bachelor's degree or higher? In Rockbridge County, it's thirty-one point five. And in Virginia, the average is forty-three point.
That works for me.
Okay, just take, work at where you take out compared.
It's good.
Did you catch that?
So just to make sure that we're keeping the first part of that sentence all the way through fifty-seven percent held a bachelor's degree or higher, period. And then in Rockbridge County.
That would be great.
But I think you're taking out the words are highly educated.
No, 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 do not take out those words. I mean, that is a very important description of Lexington. It would be sad if we had two colleges and it wasn't a highly educated community.
Right. Okay, okay. Um, well, so let's, all right, so you're going to take out compared to. And you're just going to say in the county, the number is thirty, you know, thirty-one percent. And in Virginia, the overall is forty-three point three. And you can wordsmith that to make it make sense. Thank you.
Perfect. Absolutely.
Oh, um, and then over on number in the, in the orange part, um, input from community members. I, I think you just maybe need to say what that input is from.
Absolutely. And I will note that that, that piece has not been touched yet because I was waiting for the survey data and such to be finalized. So that will certainly be re-updated.
Okay.
However, yes, I do agree that that is clarifying exactly what that input is coming from is a great point.
Yeah.
And in that, so it'll, you'll probably catch this when you update it anyway, but there's like a, a number agreement thing. Lack of housing options, entertainment and shopping was like, were cited as barriers or something. That's small potatoes again. Small potatoes are my specialty, Jeremy.
Any other que, any other, uh, edits on that page?
I think so.
Page forty-seven, moving on to forty-eight. Oh yeah, this, this was an interesting. So due to, that first paragraph, due to VMI and WNL, state government makes up fourteen point eight percent of employment?
I think it really just boils down to when you're having to drop what a university is into the sort of categories by which a lot of these data sources clarify, classify their data since they're, the university is part of, you know, it's, if it's within the state university system, it'll get lumped under a state government employee.
VMI, but not WNL.
That would be VMI.
Sure.
But WNL should not be included in that. So it, which, and, and then over in the table, that number is correct, the fourteen point eight percent. Are, and are these, is this an updated table? She says.
It is. So I did, there is a mistake, mistake there of that, that total on the bottom is not correct. That's up to fifty-six hundred.
Oh, good.
But everything else has been.
Right. I summed it up as forty-seven eighty-nine.
Which, so as you can see, there's a few of those asterisks.
Yeah, I saw that.
They, it's in certain cases, I believe it is in certain cases, if there's only, one of the things they try not to do is let you figure out like how many employees a individual business has.
Yeah.
And so the, I think because of some of those asterisks, they, that, the, the total and the numbers won't actually add up to the total there, which, um, I, I did go back. I, I noticed the same thing. I went back and double checked the, the source that I was coming from to make, to make sure that it was in fact, um, not a mistake there. And I'm pretty confident that it is not. Um, however, I can try to go back and pull some of that data from a different source to see if there's a way that gets around some of that, um, discrepancy. But it is, it is for consistency's sake, it's the same source those numbers are pulled from in the previous iteration of the comp plan as well.
And so are you saying that WNL is included in the state number? Or is VMI, does VMI have eight hundred and thirty-eight employees? I don't.
From this particular data source, I don't have a way of looking to, to figure out exactly which companies are included within or which organizations and agencies are included within each category. I have to, to try to, to go back and dig it, dig a little bit to figure that out, which I can. Um, but I'll certainly adjust the text within the, um, that paragraph there to, to make sure that is accurate reflection.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
But looking at our current comp plan, I mean, that's pretty much edited. That's, that's edited from what our current plan is. And I think the original language is better.
For sure.
What was the original language?
Uh, employment in Lexington is driven primarily by WNL, VMI, Carillion Community Hospital in Lexington City Government. Due to VMI, comma, state government makes up nineteen point three four percent of employment in Lexington, followed by accommodation and food service, healthcare, with the data.
So where does WNL fall in?
Uh, they don't.
Right.
So, but they must be a pretty big employer, isn't there?
Well, it says at the beginning, the first sentence says, employment is driven primarily by WNL, VMI, Carillion in Lexington City.
You're curious about which of the line items?
Well, I'm, yeah, yep. I'm just. So over here in table five point two, WNL is the first, is the largest employer.
You're like, where are they in the?
Yeah, where, I'm just, I, I just don't see them represented. So I'm just.
Could be spread across some of those others, like professional scientific and technical service, other services, maybe.
And also educational services at the bottom.
Do they count by the organization or they count by the individual?
I, if I had to guess, it would have to be by organization.
Organization, that's a weird question.
I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
Um, well, if, if you could, I don't know if you, if there's some way of figuring that out. Um, that it would, it would be good just to label it correctly. So because everybody who, certainly everybody who's here knows that WNL is a private, not state.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Oh, but, but are you saying the Virginia Employment Commission doesn't care? They just, they lump all higher?
I think I mostly, I'm not entirely sure where, it's very possible it is split between multiple industries as it's represented there. But I don't know for sure, at least in terms of as it's related to that table. Um, I can certainly try to go back and dig into their methodology a little bit to try to parse that out. But I'm not a hundred percent certain where the WNL jobs would fall within.
Right.
It was, I think, I agree, it's probably not within state government, but it, I'm not entirely sure how it then gets split out amongst the other, amongst the other industries.
Yeah, I, I just think since, since it's listed over here as the top employer, um, that puts it in, I don't know, maybe accommodation and food services or retail. So, and the next one, well, no. Healthcare. So it's not, it's clearly not either of those. So it's just, you know, I think it would be helpful to figure that out.
Sure.
Um, any other comments in the first paragraph? How about the second paragraph?
Just out of curiosity, if, if the VC is saying, if the way they categorize it is that all universities are in state, then we should leave it.
Um, that's, would be my inclination to, to not touch the, the table as represented, just in case. And went back to double check the, that source of data.
But, but then put an asterisk and, and just explain that.
For sure.
Right. Or just say like, are officially classified as in state government or something.
Right, exactly. Um, just, just so that it's.
Because otherwise local readers will read this and they'll think this is wrong.
Yes, exactly. And we, and, and we want people to say, this is accurate. Right? As a, as a government document. So in the second paragraph there, the sentence that starts Lexington's institutions require employees of varying positions and skill levels. I won't, I wonder if that could be changed to in varied positions and, and with different skill levels, just for readability.
So just to make sure I heard you correctly, it'd be Lexington's institutions require employees in varied positions.
In varied positions and with different skill levels. And then the last word, community in that sentence, um, a diverse supply change chain in the surrounding community. Does that mean that it's the surrounding area or is, or are we talking about Lexington proper? Are we referring to Rockbridge County as a community, I guess, is what I'm trying to do.
Fairly confident that'd be referring more to, to Rockbridge County or, or the, you know, industry and supply chains, obviously.
Right. So maybe the word area would be better.
Yeah.
And, and also there seem to be some kerning issues in this, make that a little bit hard to read.
Just the spade. Perfect.
Next page, any, unless there are any other comments on, okay, next page forty nine. First paragraph. Um, I, I would ask if we could do economic instead of the first word being economic reliance on Lexington's institution also highlights key challenges for the city's future. And then further in that paragraph, um, I don't know, maybe. Three quarters of the way down, um, there's a sentence that begins with the word with limited land. Um, I would actually suggest changing that wording to limited land is available for new development. Or land consumptive industries, period. This makes. Um, infill and redevelopment of underutilized properties. Or revenue producing purposes key to ensuring a fiscally sustainable future. It's just trying to, to make it a little bit clearer.
Shannon, could we also ask that when you're done with your packet, if we could take that, just to make it easier so we will.
Yes.
That would capture everything.
Absolutely. Second paragraph. Anybody else? Um, okay, so the fourth line down, more than a fifth of the jobs. In the city are businesses, are in businesses with fewer than twenty employees. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and again with kerning, oh, um. So in the, in table five point two, Rockbridge Area Hospice, I believe that's now called Connections Plus Healthcare and Hospice.
Great, thank you.
Actually, I'm not sure if it's hospice and healthcare or healthcare and hospice, but I think it's healthcare and hospice.
Double check and be sure, thank you.
Yeah, um, and I see that the num, the date on this is from twenty twenty five. Is that?
The.
Is, is that like end of twenty twenty five for twenty, I mean, is it, sorry, end of, is it in twenty twenty five, but, but reporting on twenty twenty four numbers?
Again, I'll have to look back at their number, I know the, the report in which it's come, that, that list comes from was published in twenty twenty five. To your point, I don't know for sure which year they are pulling that data from, I can go back and look and adjust.
I think that that might be a good idea because, again, since we're only, you know, we're nine months into twenty twenty five, but still.
For sure, absolutely.
But you want the source cited, I'm not sure what you're getting at.
Um.
It's, it's mo, mostly to cite your source, and if that's your source.
Is the question simply, is it actually twenty twenty five data, was it just published in twenty twenty five and the data may be coming from twenty twenty four? So that would maybe be the worst thing, just to update that and that's it. The source stays there, but it's just.
Yeah.
So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe putting twenty twenty four in the, in the table number of, uh, you know, table title. Lexington's largest employers, twenty twenty four. That, that would resolve the issue for me entirely.
I'm.
And.
Well, I'm assuming it would be helpful to do that with, with most of these tables, I know table five point five has that already as.
Correct.
Um, five point four, but add the year for all tables as needed.
Yes, please.
Perfect.
Um, and then in table five point three, the total employment. Doesn't seem to measure up to the. Number reported in table five point one by a lot.
It was, I believe.
Almost a thousand.
Which I believe that was the one that I noted was a mistake in five point one, if I'm remembering correctly.
So, so I just, I added those numbers up in five point one and it's forty seven eighty nine. That's the number I got. But this number is fifty six, fifty seven, so that's, that's like nine hundred people.
So. Yeah, so I believe the ta, the, the total in five point one is a mistake. At, at least according, again, according to that report from the Virginia Employment Commission, the total employment is the fifty six number.
Okay.
And then, but you're correct that when you add up the numbers from the table, it's significantly less than that. Uh, which again, I believe relates back to the asterisks that are represented both in that one and in the, 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 because I do believe there are employers that are fall, who will go back to, what was it, five point three?
Right.
About three thousand.
That, um, there are some employers that fall within, like say the two hundred fifty to five hundred and then the, you know, that, I think there are some that do that, but since those aren't represented and the totals don't add up. So I can, again, look, I'll see if I can find a source to pull from. Where it will be consistent that for those who do their homework and, and do add up the numbers, that we can make sure that it is represented and consistent that way.
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna have to add up the numbers, they're just, they're just gonna look at these two and say, so maybe another asterisk, explaining, like why they, they would be different.
Why the, the total.
Why the, why the, the total number of employees in five point three is different from the total employment in five point one.
For sure, that, that one is just a mistake on my part, that, and I'll. It should be fifty six in both five point one and five point three, the fifty six, uh, fifty seven.
Alright, so, so this is the correct number, you're gonna move this over here and then.
Will never add up because.
Okay, and, yep, yep.
Yeah, it's, my apologies for the mistake in five point one, which is creating that confusion, but yes.
Sorry, I missed, I missed that, okay. Any other comments on page forty nine?
You missed, you caught it twice.
What's that?
You caught it twice, you have missed it.
No, I just misheard. Um, page fifty? Anybody else? Um. So my comments are, in the, the first paragraph seems fine, the second, the sharing economy. The sentence sort of at the bottom, the college age people are often early adopters, it's not quite clear as a follow-up to beginning of the paragraph. Since most folks. Sort of move away after college, um, so it's not clear how that is a, follows. So I would just, I would just take another look at that.
Okay.
Um, in the tourism, um. I would say the, uh, the second sentence. Instead of starting with natural beauty, I would say the areas, natural beauty, history. Local attractions and proximity to interstates eighty one and sixty four.
I'm sorry, so I got the areas, natural beauty, and what was the second piece?
Um, so after history, local, add local attractions. And then, instead of just interstate eighty one, also interstate eighty, uh, sixty four.
Perfect.
Um, and then, we also draw, that Lexington's institution is of higher learning, also, it says, uh, this is halfway down. Also draw prospective students and their families for day trips, overnight visits throughout the year, but it's also current. So I would just say current and prospective. Or prospective and current, however that makes sense. And then in the next paragraph, after in twenty twenty four, add the word the. And that's it. Um, oh, well, okay, and then table, table five point four. Regional tourism spending, that can't possibly be right for twenty twenty five. Since we don't have.
Yeah, I believe that you're correct in that case, that would be twenty twenty four, again, from a, from data that was published in twenty five. So I think the, the source was correct, but the, the title is not, thank you.
Um, and, and I'm fascinated by the number, the retail numbers of Lexington being six point one million and Rockbridge County being twenty nine. Point seven for retail, that's, that's a surprise to me. Because the other numbers seem. Fairly. I guess other than visitor spending, maybe. Anyway, that's, that's just a, a comment.
Yeah.
Alright, next page fifty one. Any comments? Nope. Fifty two, any comments? Oh, I, you know, I just, this is maybe a, a question more, um, in this, under the Main Street Lexington program, sort of halfway down. Um, there's a paragraph that starts, uh, is focused on achieving, MSL is focused on achieving three primary goals that are best summarized as increasing the number of people living downtown. Expanding innovation, art and technology. Uh, I think I was just sort of thinking about the living downtown, I, I just wanted to call that out, I don't know. As a, as a. It's interesting that that's something, it, it, like, I didn't realize that that was something that, that they were really trying to focus on.
I think the main thing, the issue is that it's, this is Main Street and that they are only, their territory is technically the C one district.
Yeah.
So, yes, they, they did that, I don't think they're pursuing it much more, they've talked to, you know, we keep talking about people living in the upper buildings, they've talked to every.
I'm sure.
Building owner and let them know what resources are available and the ones who don't develop their buildings, their upper stories don't want to.
So.
But that was one of their, that it was one of their priorities, it still remains as far as helping current building owners make that change.
It, it probably doesn't matter, but if anybody read it, I think that they, the fact that it's first in the order. Might make people think that that was the highest priority. So, I don't know, it, it, perhaps that's the, ma, maybe.
I can check with Main Street Lexington to see.
Yeah, exactly.
Priority list or what their focus is.
I think that that would be helpful. Any, any comments on page fifty three?
I, I actually have a, a few on that one. Um, the commercial tax abatement? I'm not aware that we offer that, and if that means historic tax credits, that's not the city that does that, it's, it's the state. So I would strike that, and same with the hub zone, I don't recall what that is. Or that would be.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about that, I was wondering whether it was still funded by the federal government, which apparently it is.
Yeah. Um, but I know when we, when we talk to businesses, make, through Main Street, it's really the opportunity zone that we work with, and they've changed, that, that's been, uh. Amended, altered, but, so now the designation is current through December of, uh, twenty twenty six. So we could cha, change that date, there's opportunity to renew it after that, uh, but it's up to the governor to decide on the localities.
So you wanna take out the commercial abate, tax abatement and the hub zone?
Yes, unless, I mean, Arnie, do you know anything about the hub zone?
It's been so long, I can't remember if that's a federal program that's actually still valid or not.
It is, I looked it up.
Okay, then it's that question of, are we eligible for it, presumably we must have been, but I really don't recall anything about what the specific incentives for that is, or would be.
I did not look up if Lexington is designated.
I, I know we looked into it and I want to say that it was, but again, it was, um. I'm gonna get it mixed up with, and might, this might be opportunities, as one of those was gonna end at the end of this year, I think it was, and it might be the hub zones, but I can double check that.
That would be great.
And I guess, yeah.
I'll check with Pat Delaney to see if this commercial tax abatement thing. Is actually a thing or not, I'm not aware of it, but it was in here, so I'm thinking it may have been accurate at one point, but I'll check on that part.
Anything else on this page? Okay, thanks, Mr. Uh, anything on page fifty four? Local economy needs assessment. Okay, moving on to page fifty five. Our goals, objectives and strategies. Alright, does anybody have? This is just a yes or no, does anybody have anything?
Uh, just the broadband, I mean, well, I guess we leave it in there, but that's pretty much done now, I mean. We do not qualify for any more funding because Lexington is considered fully built out for broadband.
Where, which one is that, sorry?
Under.
Only two point five.
Yeah, right.
Two point five.
So I don't know if you just leave it in there, but when, then later in the table, we write, I guess you'd leave it and then later we'll write done on the.
Yeah.
Last chapter.
Um.
It also, I guess, shifted slightly to maintaining that network or infrastructure.
That might.
Other option.
Yeah, that sounds like a reasonable thing.
Except that if we never get.
Nothing gets done. Um, so item two point four, sell, lease or otherwise leverage it, um, underutilized city owned properties. I'm just curious, what are those, aside, is, I assume that's, uh, Spotswood and, and the.
V dot.
V dot, is there?
The Water Tower Properties, another one, and we, we have a couple little things, there's a, um, but those are the main ones, those are the big ones.
And, and is it? I'm not sure what leveraging it would, would look like.
Well, yeah, you know what, that may actually be referred, referring to Brushy Hill, we don't wanna. We wanna keep Brushy Hill as it is, but there was ta, tax, there was talk of selling it to someone as long as it's all on a conservation easement and it's open to public use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think that might be why they use leveraged, but otherwise, I don't know.
Um, and are those the only options to sell or lease these underutilized city owned properties? Or, or is keeping them or like using them for parkland or, I'm, I, I don't know, I'm just.
No, we, yeah, I mean, that is our goal, is for these underutilized parcels, yes, to.
To sell or lease.
Develop them in some way, yeah.
Okay. Um. And then I had a question about three point one, uh, it's, it says, continue to pursue streetscape improvements associated with the downtown improvement plan. Including pedestrian upgrades that make the downtown district safer and more enjoyable to visitors. Um, I would actually say that this should not just be downtown and also not just for visitors. Because we want our local people to also be safer and, and have better access to, let's say, some of the other areas of town that maybe don't have.
And that is, I, I think that is in other part chapters, but there is a downtown improvement plan.
Yeah.
And that's what.
So, so, right, which is, is just, uh. So in the, in the objective is make strat, strategic investment that enhance the quality of the community to attract visitors, businesses and employees. Um, but you also, some of the employees are gonna certainly be local.
Right, and then in the transportation section, it talks about improving walkability and.
So I, I guess I would just ask whether, whether we could either adjust this to, I mean, maybe it's just adding another one that says. Um, pursue street, straight, the, streetscape improvements. In all areas of, you know, all business districts. Because that's, I mean, that, it's just sort of calling out that it's not just the downtown.
Says something to the order of. Keeping three point one as is, but then adding a three point two, that would suggest improving walkability to all commercial, commercial areas or end businesses. Okay?
And then I would also add, at the end of three point one, for visitors and residents. Alright, and then moving on to governance.
Perfect.
Anything on page one forty?
Could I just ask, um, how long y'all would like to go this evening, since we're dwindled down to four and we're already at six twenty? Just wondering, how much more you'd like to get through?
Um. Hang on.
Another, perhaps point that may or may not be helpful. We really don't have anything else for your next agenda. So maybe if you wanted to leave some for the next agenda, because there aren't any land use applications that have been submitted.
Is your next meeting on the sixteenth? Or is it the week
Oh, that, that's not on your schedule. Sorry, my mistake. That's an assumption on your schedule.
I was checking, but is it the sixteenth? Is that correct? Was it ninth?
The second.
The ninth.
Ninth, okay. Yeah, that, that should, should work for me.
So, so
I don't ever automatically.
So if you are coming back, how many more sections do we have?
Um, I shouldn't know that off the top of my head. There are several. There's at least land use, transportation, housing, environmental or natural environment. So there's at least four in addition to these. And I wouldn't happy to go through governments right now. I'm also happy to come back on the ninth. Either way is fine with me, but
I would actually say, why don't we try and get through?
Yeah.
I mean, we're here.
Yeah, for sure.
You're here. You drove down.
Absolutely. Let's do it.
Okay. Anybody have comments on page one forty? Um, okay, so I'm going to say that the first paragraph, my, my note here says, this paragraph seems out of place and maybe it belongs in the intro. It's quite different from the other intro paragraph to the local economy section. So this, this really talks about the comprehensive plan. Sound decision making is, it just feels a little bit more like overall comprehensive plan. And then, and then the next sentence begins, this chapter of the com plan builds on. So it just seems like it doesn't, you know, that this could get moved, that first paragraph. And then in the fourth
Wait, did you move it?
Move it to
I would, I would say maybe the introduction, some sort of an introduction. I mean, it just seems like a
Introduction of the whole plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I
If, if it's not already stated there, in which case you don't need it.
Yeah, I, I'll definitely take a look to see if there's a place where it makes sense to, to move it and then and would you like to just start the chapter with, like, with stating that this chapter will, or I can also try to come up with a
That's what I would suggest.
Introduction before that, if that's preferable to set the stage.
I would just, I mean, my suggestion would be to just start it with this chapter of the com plan. Now, and at the very end of that first, in the first paragraph, you've got this, the last sentence says, this applies to all users, including businesses, applicants, citizenry. I would just, I would use the word citizens because everything else ends with an S. And then in that, in the second paragraph, after, in the fourth line down, information is disseminated. I would, I would suggest adding in a manner that is right after disseminated. Both timely and accurate. And then in the, the highlighted section, second paragraph, the word several. So concerns over affordability in Lexington were cited along with a tax base impacted by several parcels, parcels. I would say the many based, based on numbers later in this section. Since sixty five percent of our
Impacted by many parcels, is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
It took me a second to find where it was.
Yeah, sorry. The many. Page one forty one, anybody else have comments? I just had one. As provided, second paragraph, sorry, at the very beginning, that, or I should say that first paragraph, second paragraph, sorry, sorry. Second paragraph, second sentence, the council manager structure combines the strong, and I'm, the word I'm wondering about is the word political. And I'm wondering if community and legislative leadership would be more accurate. Leslie, that might be a question for you.
I think either one is, is fine. I think, yeah, I mean, we're political leaders. I would, I would think I would leave it political, but
It just doesn't, I mean, I don't, I, I don't think of like the, of council as being super political, whereas I think of you all as being very community. I mean, you're community leaders and you're legislative leaders. That's sort of what I
That would be fine. I'm guessing that's probably taken out of some text regarding city council manager structure.
That's all I have on that page. Next page, one forty two. Anybody have?
Yeah.
All right, John.
So this is where the thing about tax revenues comes back up, right? Am I on the right page? Cause I can't see.
I'm sorry, it's planning context.
That's right. Yeah. So there's that third paragraph under city budget is where this subject of tax revenues returns. And I'm not disputing anything about it. But there's the asterisk there about the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes program. And it says to offset a portion of its impact of WNL's contribute, WNL, okay, a portion of its impact on city revenues and services. I read that to say WNL is paying a portion of what would be lost. We had a presentation made to us by city manager, right, that suggested that that it wasn't just a portion actually, but that, that the total, that the total was offset. Was that not what we were told?
It's new buildings, I think. I think there are, I could be wrong, but I thought there were some of the original buildings weren't all in the pilot.
Got it. So this is accurate, as written. No, I'm, I'm only seeking clarification about that. Yeah.
And I can't remember the details enough to answer that question accurately, because there's a complicated formula with
Totally.
existing properties, new properties, how they're going to go forward since nineteen ninety. So is, is there any wordsmithing to offset?
I, I, I don't even, I'm even proposing wordsmithing, just that we make sure that we know the answer to that question, lest it read inaccurately in that regard. And I don't know the answer.
Maybe take out a portion if it does.
Well, but unless it's accurate to, unless that is actually accurate.
That's what I, I don't remember if the original buildings
That's a great question.
Are a part of it, right. But whenever they build something new or renovate, then it does come into the pilot.
Right. But somebody can, we can figure that out.
Yeah, certainly.
Cool clarification to make.
Thanks.
Is it accurate then to say that forty five percent of owners of, or that, so forty five percent of the property in Lexington is in private, is being taxed?
Thirty five.
Based on taxed assessed value.
Thirty
And that's an important disclaimer that it's not based on land mass, it's based on tax assessed value.
Ah, okay. Total assessed value.
Yes, yeah, it makes a big difference.
Yeah, those, those numbers would be interesting to see. Anybody else have anything on that? Page one forty two? Moving on to one forty three. Planning context. Continued. Does anybody have anything on this page? I, I have one question, which is since tables eleven point two and eleven point three are general fund revenues and general fund expenditures respectively. I totaled these numbers up just out of curiosity and wow, are they different?
Cause we have carryover funds that I don't think are probably in the revenue side, maybe.
Actually, the revenues is, is about eleven thousand dollars more than expenditures.
And then that may be, then we carry over projects. If we don't spend it all in one year, it carries over to the next year.
So I, I would actually just suggest totaling those numbers and then having an asterisk next to that that says something to that effect.
And there was a surplus too.
Yeah. Anything else on that page? Okay, let's move on to one forty four. Anybody else have any comments?
Nope.
There were some kerning issues in the last paragraph on this page.
On one forty four?
Yeah. And then I had a question about under citizens. So public participation was a critical component of drafting this plan and engagement must continue. Engagement must continue through implementation. A comprehensive plan is only successful if the community and its leaders strive toward each goal, taking ownership of their role. And I, I just wanted to comment that I think if they're going to call that out, we need to make sure that everybody's roles are clear. Cause it's really hard to take ownership of, of your role if you don't know what your role is. And, and, and to that end, it may be that in these, you know, where the, the goals and objectives and strategies. I know we sort of talked about this as we were going through, there were, like, when we went through the list and we were like, oh, well, you know, we're not quite sure who would be responsible for that. And I know that there are some, there's, there are challenges with regards to that, but as much as possible, it would be great if we could identify, you know, who would be, who would we even ask if they've done this, you know, done goal? Or, or a strategy geo one point one.
There, there is a table. I don't know if it's the last chapter, but it, as far as the city does, I thought it had specified whether it's
The implementation chapter.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, just as an example, and just going through some of that really quickly, responsible agency. So there are a couple of extra columns, responsible agency and then scheduling. So in the responsible agency, there's city of Lexington, nonprofit organizations, local business partners. So it doesn't specifically say like which organization, but just sort of generally describes them, just to give a quick overview.
So I guess I would say that, that it, I mean, you probably can't list individual companies. I mean, certainly not. But, but for anybody who's employed by the city, maybe just even by a department, you know, like this would be the police department or this would be that that might be helpful. And is, so is there that level of specificity?
City of Lexington, some city of Lexington, local business partners, regional institutional partners. But does not put down in the city departments.
So maybe when we get to that part of the plan, we could sort of parse that a little bit more, just so that people know that, wow, maybe I need to be thinking, thinking about this and they, and they have a place that they can go and, and say, okay, this is, I'm responsible for this. I need to be, I need to at least know whether it's being worked on.
Yeah.
Um, anything else on one forty four? How about one forty five? Okay, I do. I would, so let's see, about halfway down, there's a sentence that begins in the, in the middle. It says, the city currently participates in a number of regional services and planning efforts. And just because of the structure of it going down the, the sentence, I would take out that dash and I would put in a comma and then say, including the
Easy enough.
So including the library system. And then there's a list and then, let's see, a community services board, a tourism office and board, comma, the regional water and wastewater plants. The workforce investment board. And the economic, sorry. Is that supposed to be a board?
Uh, no, there's no board.
And, okay, so and economic development to name a few. And then that's fine after that. How about page one forty six? Okay. First paragraph under needs assessment. So the last line, the last full line, challenges and are able to. So I would, I would suggest adding are able to voice their priorities. So this whole sentence would read to ensure that citizens understand Lexington's governance and implementation challenges and are able to voice their priorities. Right, the second bullet there. Maybe, maybe somebody else, maybe Leslie or Arnie, you could explain why this is just aimed at teachers and administrators of color instead of residents.
It was more because a school was doing a campaign as far as getting out to the more schools with historically black schools to recruit teachers going to their career days, letting them know about Lexington, trying to bring them to Lexington. They were doing an actual effort. We don't make any effort to we try to make all of our citizens feel inclusive. We don't target a specific group.
Okay, so, so
Is that initiative still ongoing or is that phased out?
Uh, I think they still do that. I think they try to recruit a variety of teachers.
Department of Education, this is schools.
This is our schools, our local schools.
Maybe you could specify that by modifying administrators, education administrators or something. School administrators.
Yeah, teachers and school administrators.
Well, now that you say that, I, I was reading it just as teachers and school administrators, but and I guess it could be department heads, but from, from a city standpoint, we, you know, we follow equal employment opportunity.
Right, right.
Guidelines. We try to have diverse candidate pools for any job applications. So I guess you could broad, you could interpret that as being broader and maybe that's why it's that, but
So then do you, would it be more accurate just to say? Or say that again?
City administrators instead of school administrators.
I think it is really geared toward schools though.
Just leave it as it
Yeah, right. Cause, cause I think there's a, a strategy to that effect.
Okay.
But there is also one, I think, for city as a whole.
Looks like a strategy says the city and school system.
Yeah, right, right.
So then should it reflect that in here? City and
I guess that is administrators, maybe.
So teachers and
I don't know why it'd be just administrators, but
Just leave it?
Yeah.
Although then it sounds like it is administrators at the school.
Yeah, I think it is just meant to be for the schools.
Okay. All right, so the one, two, three, four, fifth one down. I would recommend spelling out capital improvement plan instead of using the acronym. Since it's the first time on that page that that is used. Last, sorry, last page. Uh, one forty seven, page one forty seven. The, does anybody have anything on this? Okay, the, the only one that I, that I wanted to add something to, not change anything, was the second one. Advance fiscal responsibility and resiliency in all city decisions. But this is only about working with Main Street Lexington and et cetera to engage businesses and promote the city's continued economic growth. And I just sort of wondered about sort of the budgeting process or making sure that the city's budget is balanced or, you know, just something that, that reflects.
Either the objective is, doesn't fit the strategy or, or right, or you need another strategy kind of.
Right, it, it, right, the strategy should, should reflect all city to say, you know, there's, there's, yeah. all city to city, you know, there's, there's, yeah. So I'm not quite sure to how to word that. I, I, I worked up a bunch and I wasn't happy with any of them, so I.
Yeah.
I mean, I suppose, you know, yeah.
Just to, to make sure I'm understanding, the idea would be to make sure, would be to rework the strategy such that it fits better within that.
No, I would actually put a second strategy in.
There'll be a second strategy to.
Yeah. I would, I mean, when you've got one that's really, you know, this one seems pretty finely crafted. It's, you know, it's got something very specific in mind. I wouldn't change that. I would just add something that's more, that addresses the rest of the
Yeah.
city decisions. And maybe has to do with the budgeting or, I don't know. Since that, that is what the objective is.
It's a good objective, but yeah, I, I'm not sure if the objective doesn't need to be rewritten if you're going to use that as your strategy.
Or but maybe there is one for the budgeting process and us retaining good, what's it, when they come in and go over our financials?
Yeah, auditing.
Auditing score or whatever we get. Maybe there's something that's sort of along those lines that.
And we could even make that one two point one and make the other one two point two or something along those lines. So, yeah.
Is, is there a city rainy day fund?
Well, we have, we have a fund balance, so kind of, yes.
That could go to resiliency.
Yeah, and we do have policies for how much has to be maintained in, in that.
Is there state, like, you're supposed to have a certain percentage and we're always well over that. So I don't know. That's another one that just to make sure that we are above state mandated or.
We even set our own policy that, a, a city policy that's more conservative than requirements.
So would, would maintaining the rainy day fund for, you know, even if, even if we know that you already do it, you know, having it in here would answer some people's concerns about, well, why is there eleven thousand, eleven million dollars more in revenue? Right, just to say, well, because we have a rainy day fund and we're required to have a rainy day sent, see?
Yeah, we, we don't call it a rainy day. I think it's.
Whatever, whatever you call it.
But right, yes, right.
I mean, I, I think that that just.
Fits better with that, right?
Yeah.
Jeremy, easy enough to draft two of those.
I think that shouldn't be two. So it'd be one that's regarding maintaining the rainy day fund that's over and above the state requirements, something to that effect. And then another one that's more related to ensuring, I was gonna say ensuring a balanced budget, but that's not necessarily accurate, or would we want the one that's more related to.
More about auditing, maintaining, I can't remember how those are graded or. We get gold stars every year.
Every year, right.
Maintaining good auditing, and I can't think of the word.
Protocols?
To make sure we meet the minimum auditing goals, but that's not a nice way of saying that.
Right.
But there are standards for whether you pass or you don't pass, for how well you pass. And I just don't know enough about that to say how that gets put down.
Yeah.
I can certainly.
The equivalent of a credit score.
Right? You wanna say that?
Did.
No. Ladder.
So we'll add those two and then we'll bump the work with Main Street Lexington, et cetera, down to two point three. But there.
Yep. That is all I have. And then we've already gone through all of these these tables. Thank you so much. Is there anything else that we need to do to help you in your process?
I don't believe so. I think it'll mostly be a matter of, I think this is extremely helpful in terms of refining each chapter as they come along. So it will mostly be a matter of continuing that process as they get sent out and I should be sending out revised versions of all of these as well, including the ones that we looked at last time. So I can, I'll certainly be compiling those to what will be the, the, the final version, but also you'll have a chance to look at that again, make sure I got it all down correctly and that didn't make any mistakes in translation and the like, so. Yeah.
Super. Thank you so much. And this is for you, apparently.
You like for me, so that you don't lose that? Want me to scan that in, send it to you and send it, Jeremy? Or are you okay just handing?
Yeah, I would, I would actually love that. Yeah, that would be great. Okay, so we're gonna close new business. Thank you so much for coming, Jeremy, and move on to other business and our zoning and planning report.
No report.
All right, city council report.
Uh, we met twice in the last week, but they were both work sessions. So last Thursday, when we were supposed to have a regular meeting, we just had a work session on stormwater and talked about areas of, of concern and what we need to start planning for in our capital improvement plan. And then yesterday, we had a work session with the EDA Economic Development Authority with Tim Davy from the Timmons Group, who we've worked with in the past. And he's going to help us market and sell, hopefully develop the Spotswood and the VDOT properties.
Yeah. Wow.
So we'll start ramping up on that again.
Okay. Great.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Thank you all, everybody. I think we need a motion and a second.
Move to adjourn.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you all.
You got it. I defer, I defer.
Well, thank you all for hanging in there.
Yeah, that was good. No, I'm glad we powered through. Thank you for reading the plan so carefully.
Yeah, thank you very much for your thought.
Editing is, is one of those things that I love to do.
I think we went through this five years ago and. Other people were wordsmithing.
You guys have been busy.
Lived here then, yeah.
A lot of work sessions.
Yeah, there have been a lot of work sessions lately. There is a lot.
Are they public meetings also?
They are, yes. We don't typically, we're not, we're not required to take public comment, but we sometimes do. We just can't make any decisions in a work session. That's really the only difference. It's more casual. I guess you are.
Well, I'm learning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I talked to one of the county planning commissioners, pretty breezy.
Yeah.
Once at the time, but yeah.
Yeah, maybe it was just lost. I didn't even catch that. Yeah, yeah. Just bolded or something.
Just finished all my lessons yesterday.
See, Arnie?
Yep, good evening.
Hi, Charlie. Hey, Shannon. Yeah, yeah. We should, we should start over. We just closed the YouTube. I can't ring them very late. Does this remote, does this not, it's not free. Is this worth though? Okay. Stop recording.